I don't want to spend one more minute.
Yeah, no, we don't want to pay for one more minute.
I like the St. Patrick's motif up there.
Oh.
The ladies.
This is the regular monthly March meeting of the Milbrook Board of Trustees. Will everyone please stand for the head of the meeting?
The leaders to define the United States of America into a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Doro.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Buckland.
Here.
Trustee Mossing.
Here.
And Trustee Sutcliffe.
Here.
Need some minutes for approval as well?
Yes. We have last month's and the water reserve budget.
Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes that were distributed earlier?
Yep.
Any comments, corrections?
Excuse me.
Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. We'll be sending around the vouchers as well. Can I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approved. Chief, we are accepting Officer Kenny's resignation tonight.
Yes, sir.
Any other color there?
Nothing unusual. Just felt it was time for him to move on from law enforcement duties and he's gonna just continue his career outside of law enforcement.
I'll make a motion to accept Officer Kenny's resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
For the record, he does resign in good standing.
Good to know. Thank you, Chief. Ted.
Evening. Hello, this is Mr. Tom Bell. My name is Ted Bonas. I've been in fire departments since 1993. I was chief from 2010 to 2023. And Dom asked me to join you tonight to give a bit of an overview of our Low Sap Service Award Program. The programs, we started in 2002. It's essentially a retirement system. It's a very low rated retirement system. It's fairly common in its, both its inception and its existence in fire departments, volunteer fire departments in New York State. A lot of them, a lot of fire departments use similar programs. And what it does is it awards points to active members for various types of call response, meetings, work details, and other types of department events that we attend. And at a minimum point threshold for the year, you get a contribution from the authority of your jurisdiction, which is either a village board, in the case of a village-owned fire department, or a fire department board commissioners for fire districts. And they contribute it to an account, an investment account. Ours is run by Penflex Corp. And that's who presented it to us when we first started talking about it in 2002. You have to be active in the system, in the program for five years to be vested, like a lot of retirement systems. And so when we started in 2002, we had to compile five years of data going back to 1997 for current members, you know, to determine who was going to be vested in it from the start. And then forward new members as they join, they get entered in the program and they spend five years getting vested before they start to collect the village's contribution. So the original contribution was $300 a year. And if that sounds like a really small amount, it is. It's the lowest possible option of several that they presented to us at the, at the beginning of the program. That was the one the village adopted at the time. And several years ago.
Three years ago, four years ago?
Oh, one, okay. So it's been a couple of years. They, the village did go to a public referendum and increased it from 300 to 700. So the current contribution per member is $700 a year now, if you make 50 points for the year. So the packet goes through a brief description of the point totals and how it works. We get points for training courses. So a training course is anything that's outside of our normal drills. Like if we go to the county to take a course, or we go to another department to take a course that's hosted. And each time, each of these categories, there's a maximum. So the maximum points you can get for an annual, for classes annually is 25. As an example, and it goes by hours. If it's under 20 hours, it's one point for hours. If it's over 20 hours, it's five points plus one point for each hour over 20, not to a C10. So it is just, it, it takes some math. Like I spent a few months at the end of the year tallying all this stuff up and, and getting ready to send it to the village. Some of our classes are kind of long. For example, if someone takes firefighter one class or EMT class, those are both over 100 hours. So you max out your 25 points for training really quickly for the year if you take one of those longer classes. But most of the classes that we take after our initial training run in the, like, 24 to 48 hour range. So most of those you'll get between five and 10 points for. Drills, or conduct two drills typically a month. We try to schedule two a month. And then a few others, like if we're invited to participate in another company's drill, say on a Saturday or something, those are points for drills. Sleep in or standby, what we use that for is the call nights at the rescue squad, our ambulance corps. The EMS members each take a call night each week. So if you take a call night during the week, it's a 12-hour call shift and you get a point, whether you're gonna want to call or not. Attendance monthly meetings, you get maximum of 20 points for those. And realistically, we only have 12, or like if we call a special meeting, we might have 13 in a year. So you're probably not gonna max out for 20. If you serve in an office, the chief, the president, different line offices and civil offices, you get points for those. And the, and then call response, obviously. So that's a, a minimum of 10% a year. So we have to make, we have to split the calls, whether they're fire or EMS, because we have members that are only active on the fire department side, members that are only active on the rescue squad side. So we, we split those up and we tally how many EMS calls we run in a year, and then how many of everything else we run in a year. And you have to make 10% of those. And it's a yes or no. Either you made 10% or you didn't. And you get points for that. What's it say on there? How many points is it? 25 points, okay. So that's the biggest one. For most of the members, the, the call response is the big one. If you can get your 10% of the calls for the year, you get half your points taken care of right then, because honestly, that's, that's our priority. We want our members doing the calls. We need our members doing the calls. So that's the biggest part of it. So, and so you, and then at the end of the year, like I said, we tallied this all up and we had the points up. And if we get 50 points, it goes with this packet to the village and the village reviews it, signs off on it. And they make sure that A, you know, my math is correct. And that if you have questions about how we tally the points, I can show you those sheets, you know, separately. Very interesting, to be honest. It's a lot of sitting with a pencil and a computer and trying to figure everything out. And then, so the village signs off on it, and then we post the list of who got how many points for 30 days to the firehouse in case anyone has an objection or question. And then it comes back to the town again, or Dom signs off on it first, then it comes back to the town again, or the village again. And then they send it to Penflex, and Penflex decides how much the bill is based on how many members made their 50 points for the year. So it's pretty simple.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you. So with that, we have the sheet that needs to be signed.
So the blue sheet comes to the village every year, and that gets signed by the mayor and all the trustees. And then that's what tells the, that's what tells Penflex that the village is authorizing, you know, the, the results as the fire company has tallied up.
We're quit.
Good evening, everybody. So I saw a flyer for a handbag drive. And through this organization called the Lead Program. And they were, they're gonna collect these handbags to distribute to the needy in Dutchess County. And they're gonna fill these bags with, like, necessary items, like toiletries and what have you. So I thought maybe it would be nice if we were a place that they can donate, since we're kind of like in the middle of the county. And so people, that way would come this way. So we're gonna start doing this drive. It's gonna start on the 17th, goes through April 30th, which is nice, because we have that good yard sale. Thanks, baby. If your purses don't sell, you know, bring them here. And so that's about all I have for this one. If there's any questions, it's pretty simple.
How do people know about the handbag drive?
We're gonna be distributing it on Facebook, and then I'm gonna pack flyers all around the village.
Great, thanks.
So hopefully, people's, and Chief, Chief's gonna help too. So that's why we have the police helping us with that.
And if people want to donate, can they donate handbags and also the, the mature, the?
Correct. Yep. So if you don't have handbags, yep, you don't have handbags, but you have a couple extra tubes of toothpaste, then
Okay, yeah, great.
Bring them out. And we'll, and they're gonna distribute them in the month of May for the ladies.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you. It seems like a great class. I'm looking forward to participating here. Lieutenant Housen is not here, it appears. So we shall go to Chief.
Um, nothing too out of the ordinary this month. The two structure fires that are on there, one was a mutually, and one was a cake box left on the oven. But didn't extend past melting the microwave above it, and that was about it. Yep. Other than that, the mutually received for the NDP, both times for a second call in the districts. And one of them was being, or county dispatched the, one of the new floating ambulances from the county to that. So they are keeping us in that loop. The good news about that as well is because they're floaters and they kind of just bounce around the county, one of their spots seems to be Washington Hollow to be standing by.
Yeah.
So it's, now, nice to know that they're kind of keeping us
Yeah, definitely.
in the loop there. They're not keeping it on the west side of the county like everyone was afraid of. Other than that, our SCBA recertification rule will be this month, and fire racing for training.
Correct.
That's it for there. The rescue truck bid was posted. Thank you, sir. So we'll be starting to get the bids on that soon.
Okay.
That's about it. Anything you can think of?
The only thing with that floater was they are, I noticed that they are sitting at the fire department as well.
Yeah.
So they're, they say they're like a Conic and 44. They're usually within like a three or four mile radius of where they say they're at. What I saw at the firehouse two weeks ago, they were sitting there, they actually walked up to me. Yeah, they walked up to me and said, "Chief, this is a problem. The firehouse is set." I was like, "No, go ahead."
Yeah, okay.
So.
Good to have them close as well. Okay. Thanks, Dom. Matthew.
Last month, I mentioned about the possibly bringing the carnival back.
Yes.
It is a go.
Well, that's great.
We, Dom, myself, and Ted met with the new priest at St. Joseph's School, or St. Joseph's Church. And we are gonna be using the school grounds to host the carnival.
That's awesome.
Wow.
Cool.
So go up in the field?
Up in the field, and the parking.
And then the, have the parking, yeah. That's better.
Down the hill kind of thing, or you know where exactly yet?
Uh, it's gonna be on the grounds. We're gonna use the parking lot, and then there's a lot of the spacing behind the school as well.
Yeah, great. We have dates yet?
July 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Parade's on the 12th.
Okay.
A lot of cheese to work in. Probably a month or so before then, we'll try to meet with you to figure out stuff for parade night and maybe officers being up near the carnival ground and starting to, sounds good. So just let me know. We'll go.
Thank you. So no block party, obviously?
No block party.
Good. I think that'll be very well received by the community.
Um, in my email I sent you, we decided to, I talked with, with Dom. I'm gonna take the, um,
Cameras?
Cameras off the table.
Okay.
Decided to go into it in a different route.
Okay.
So that's a savings of over $12,000 for the budget.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
You like that?
Yep.
What else?
That's all I have.
Yeah, it is one.
Thanks, guys.
Well done.
Awesome.
I'll be able to meet you when you're meeting with Matt on Friday.
Perfect.
Um, I just might be five minutes late.
No, no worries. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief.
Okay, so 208 calls for service. I'll let everybody get an opportunity to take a look at that. Any questions?
Parking, parking summons. Excuse my ignorance. Do they mean parking tickets?
Yeah.
I'd like to talk to you at some point about how we're writing some of these tickets. And, you know, like for the parking tickets, where are they being written? If they're being written on Franklin Avenue, for example. I think there's generally less revenue coming to the village after the fact.
Sure.
I'd like Josh to weigh in on this as well at some point. Because, and I talked to the deputy clerk today, we are getting significantly less money than we have in, even since last year, in the town, in the town court, regarding tickets. And I don't know if it's a special prosecutor issue over there and how they're writing them, or how they're, you know, giving the deals out. But something's going on where there's a gap and it's just not flowing back to the village like it has in eight months and years past. Okay. It's either the judge or the special prosecutor, from, from my understanding. I don't know what else. I don't think it's really us. It's almost fire.
Yeah, it, it's not us. And I did speak with the court clerk about that. We had a good conversation about that and a couple of other things. And, and one of the points that she made, and I agree with her, is our fines are very low compared to what fines are in other adjoining jurisdictions. So I think that's something that, this is a good time for us to review that. And, you know, I could put something, a recommendation before the board to address those fines. Like this, this.
Like the parking fines or other fines as well?
All the fines, all the parking fines.
Because if we write a ticket, especially if it's a moving violation, they're not prosecuting that.
Well, that's, well, that's all the state.
They're dropping it down.
Right, that's, we don't have anything to do about that than trying to, you know, uh, manage it through the, the town prosecutor.
That's why I think there's an issue there, maybe, because I, I don't know.
Can talk to the prosecutors and think, nothing against doing that.
Is it, um?
Sense of what's going on.
Is it vandal water that does theirs?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It was at one point, but I feel like it's somebody did right now.
I, I think there might be an issue there, but yeah, I mean, we can try to get to the bottom of this.
I can, I can do that.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Chief, sorry.
Sure, that's okay. Under investigations, we had a menacing, uncooperative victim, uncooperative suspect. So that was really kind of dead in the water. Juvenile harassment. I'll give you a little bit of background on the menacing. So this is a case where it was reported that a gentleman was walking down the road, another vehicle coming up the road drove at him, forced him to, you know, run off of the road. That's how it came into us. We looked into, we were able to locate the pedestrian and then locate the driver at another location and spoke with both of them. And apparently, there's some sort of relationship there, but we can't force them to cooperate. And so, because they refused to, there's really not much more, we, we can't really further the investigation at that point. Just uncooperative victim. So it's about all we can do. The juvenile harassment was a case that was originally handled by the sheriff's office, and this came in afterward. Kind of like a follow-up complaint. So we turned it over to the sheriff's office until they handled the initial call. And then the disorderly conduct was just, was a minor issue at one of the local businesses that, you know, kind of flared up and, and we were able to mediate it. But when he was injured, it was just really kind of a minor thing. So that's it for investigations for the month.
I have a quick question. So you have foot patrol 74 incidences.
Yep.
Is that like saying low, when someone says low, you count that as an incident?
Well, we count. So what we do is we take a report basically on everything. So a foot patrol is every time an officer physically gets out of his car and walks the village. That means they go down Franklin Church, wherever they go. But it's, it's more than just, you know, pulling over to the side of the road, jumping out and shaking someone's hand and getting back in. They actually spend some time in the village. Sometimes they go into the businesses. Sometime they'll spend time speaking with some pedestrians. But it's mostly just to, you know, when people drive through, and because it's a state road and it's a thoroughfare, it's always a good idea to have a police car out, have the officers on foot in uniform so that people driving through, when people on foot see them, and it helps to deter crime. So it's, it's really a good deterrent. I spoke with the mayor earlier this year, I know former Mayor Kalop, he felt the same way, getting the foot patrol out there is really important. We try to do it at least at the minimum twice a shift. So yeah, because anything where the officers are, you know, assigned to a detail or a call for service goes under, you know, it gets a report generated and we report it as a, you know, call for service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, good question. You know, we're, we're a walking village, and I know Tim and I were, were big supporters of, of walking patrols, you know, for, for many years now. And having them, to the extent weather and everything else allows, you know, at least one or two a shift is, I think is really nice. People like seeing them. They can meet people in the community, they, they get to meet business owners. I saw Officer Roman in the sunshine, you know, this past weekend out. So it was, I think it's a, I think it's great.
Yeah, it's great, bro, right. Perfect for this, for the village. So we, earlier this year, or should say, fall of last year, we've been for a patrol rifle grant. Unfortunately, we were denied based on insufficient available funds to provide the grant award. So we will look for other avenues. You know, grants for these type of, for firearms are, are not hard to find. So they come up once a year, because we were denied in 2024, which means we can't refile next year. But that is something that's, you know, an item that was listed in the upcoming budget under equipment. The law enforcement technology grant, so far, we are reviewing purchase of radio equipment, looking at warranties, three different vendors, you know, pricing, things like that. I'm sure everybody's heard of the radio, the radio program that's being developed in the county for highway fire, ambulance and police. That's years off. I think Dom's mentioned that at the last meeting. So that is just something that we have to deal with. But this will all be covered under the law enforcement tech grant, no cost to the village. Still reviewing the purchase of a records management system. Been purchasing automated license plate reader for the new vehicle, just waiting for the install conducted. And then a server computer is on hold pending the outcome of which records management system we go with. And that's because we may need a server for that, or we may be able to use cloud services. But we won't know which direction we're gonna go until we identify which RMS we're going with.
The radio, that was pushed back at least a year, you guys said, right?
2027, yeah.
That's just the fireside?
As far as I know.
That's for everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody, yeah.
So we're gonna be rolled out at once.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So Department Policy Manual is completed. It's been reviewed and tailored to, to meet department needs. All legal updates have been completed, and it's prepared to be submitted for board approval. What I'd like to recommend is, I can provide a copy of the table of contents for the board. If, if the board would like to choose, my recommendation would be 10 policies. I'll submit those policies to the board. You can review them at your leisure. If you accept those policies, you're satisfied that, you know, that's a good reflection of what are over, we're talking about 150 policies or more here. So for me to give you the binder in its entirety, I think would be really overwhelming. I think if you folks pick what you feel are the 10 most critical policies to review, I'll provide them. You can take a look at them. If there's any more you want to look at, fine. If not, if you're satisfied, then I'd like to make a recommendation that the board approves the policy. Any questions about that?
It's the plan. Let's, let's get that going as soon as, as soon as possible.
I'll have it ready for the next meeting.
Ken.
I'd just like to acknowledge Chief Morgan for drawing this to a conclusion. This is a result of probably two years of effort. It really puts us back in the right way.
Yep.
Congratulations to Chief and the police for following through on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, as soon as we can get this approved, let's, let's do it. I think the table of contents is great. If anybody else wants to see more, see it in its entirety, good luck, but.
But it's, it's available, right? I mean, it's a public document and it is, it would be available?
It's, it's not gonna be published publicly, but it, but it is, yes. I would say it's available, but here's, here's the issue. We have some things we have to be careful about.
Right.
Careful about, because there are tactical and strategic cooperational plans within the policy that we can't always release to the public, because it could create an officer safety issue. But yeah, yes, we do publish, like our use of force policy is on the website and things like that. If somebody ever wanted to see it, they could foil it. We can certainly provide a copy of, you know, particular.
That's, that's all I mean. It's not like this is a secret, not even, and if people, right.
How is the affirmation of some of the previous policies by current officers going? Are we at the speed? Because I know they were.
We're doing pretty well. We have more than half of the officers are about, I'll say this. Half of the officers are almost completely through it. And then we have other officers remainder are probably close to half. So I think we're making good headway, because it's a huge volume of information. And, you know, I want to get it to the board. Instead of waiting, I think the most important thing right now is, is for us to get, make a binding document so that we can just move forward. The officers will catch up. We're, we're watching that, monitoring it to make sure that they, they continue to progress.
Okay.
Fleet vehicles, the 2023 Charger is, it, it's ready to go on the road. It's just waiting for a radio install. And we should have that in the road pretty, pretty quickly. Employee identification cards, the design is complete. All we need to do is anybody who wants a card, the elected officials, members of the fire department, highway, talked about the inspector, anyone who, who would like to have one or feels it's important to have a, a village ID card can come in and either, either Sarah or Nicole or I can take a photograph, and that's really all we need, and some of your information. And we can put it on the card and get them, get them done.
Are you guys interested?
We have a, not as high quality system already for making IDs for the carnival and block party. So probably not at the moment.
Okay.
Possibly in the future.
But somebody nod to everyone else to get. People want it. Um, especially like Ken and Justin too. Scott, do you want one? You're not gonna bully the village, but it might, you know.
It's, it's probably nice if you chose somebody.
But when you knock out people's doors.
Someone can do that.
It might be helpful, that's all. You don't want, you know, you're called. In your, in somebody's backyard for whatever reason. Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you.
Drug kickback program has kicked off. As everybody can see, when they first come to the entryway, the kiosk has been installed, thanks to Ethan, thanks to the highway department. We did post it on social media. We got, you know, pretty, pretty decent feedback. I think we had about 4,000 insights. I mean, probably close to 4,600 people saw the post. Yeah, so it's, it's out there. And it's open, not just to village residents, but town of Washington residents as well. And really, any resident of Dutchess County can come in and, and, and take advantage of the program. The Galls Equipment Count was established. It's basically an account that allows us to purchase uniforms and equipment through Galls at the Albany contract price, which is a little bit better than the state contract rate. And the only other thing that occurred was made the recommendation, which was approved by the board for the hiring of Officer Alyssa LaSorsa.
Any start date there?
Waiting on equipment for her.
Okay.
She should, we should, like to get her going within the next two weeks.
Great, oh, great. It's a huge result. Awesome. Any questions for Chief, the board, and the public?
I just want to say the new car looks great. The lighting from the EBS looks great.
Yeah, those guys are fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. Highway, Deputy Mayor Murphy.
Lots and lots of snow, lots of overtime. Snow and ice events in February, there's twelve inches that accumulated. Three of the, three of them, three inches of ice freezing rain. Five plowable, plowable events and five freezing rain events with sanders going out. Treated ice spots daily, treated danger freezing and ice spots on the sidewalks daily. Roughly ninety hours worked for just treating and plowing roads, parking lots, sidewalks and water sewer departments during February. Twenty one winter storm ice events so far this winter since mid-November twenty twenty four. They've been out a bunch, working hard. Re- they rebuilt the calcium chloride pump and stand. Maintain plows, sanders and trucks. They repaired a catch base in front of my house in Church Street. Started paving stormwater, started a paving stormwater grant with our legislator, Deidre Houston, on asking our assemblywoman Dee Dee Barrett for a one-time payment to help with drainage replacement on stormwater paving roads and that's really need help. Um, started the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget proposal, which will be proposed on March nineteenth, twenty twenty five at the village hall. Replace hydraulic pistons and hydraulic lines on the Kubota tractor that services the sidewalks, that's a little one that they have. Um, and then me and Ethan met up with all the contractors for the bid of Washington to repave, grind. We met today. There's probably six, eight contractors that were there, so that was good. Do you have any other questions? Anybody?
Busy?
Um, yeah, they they say busy this month. There's a lot of, a lot of winter.
When is that? What are the bids due?
Uh, says March twelfth.
Oh, right.
Twenty first. Oh, March twenty first. Yep, March twenty first.
Yeah, we got it.
But it should be fairly simple. It's just grinding, binder and then paving, top coat.
And do we, do we make that decision? Do you make that decision?
Catch bases are already finished. We will make that decision together.
We will, okay.
Yeah, we'll get all the proposals in and we'll.
Yep, yep.
Did you take a look at, um, I forgot what he said now, but some of the catch bases on Washington that seemed to have sunk a little bit, he mentioned to me today.
When we were there, he didn't mention that at all to me.
Let's take a look. Let's, I wanna you take a look.
Okay.
It's amazing.
Some of the pavers were set near.
Near where, I think near, um, I can't, harvest over there.
Okay. I didn't notice that when I was there. He might think they, some of the guys said they need risers and stuff, like maybe a riser on it with the new pavement, depending on the curb height of the of the road, but that's almost on the budget. It it doesn't look like it needs it to me.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one that's sunk in. Across the street from Merritt Bookstore, there's that's sunk in.
Okay.
Yeah, he's gonna be.
There's a couple around.
There's a couple that he'll be fixing up this year, but that won't be any of that.
He's been. He's been not making a list of them, so we're gonna do a lot of that in-house.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And he's trying to get a lot of them cleaned as well, right?
Yeah.
They're, cause a lot of them are filled with crap over the years.
Yeah, not not draining.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll be, um, we'll be meeting with him as a group next week to discuss.
Yep.
Pleasure.
Okay, you deputy? Questions from the public at all? Uh, just a quick update for me, uh, for the community development block grant. Uh, I did end up making the final application to the counties, uh, for the Franklin Avenue, uh, north side of Franklin for the sidewalks in the business district. So, uh, haven't heard anything back, but, um, so we'll see how that goes. Scott?
Thanks, guys. Guys, on the water side, we had a water service blind leak on reservoir that was repaired by the owner. Uh, checked out a water pressure issue at Elm Drive School. We checked the water meter. Everything on our end was fine. Uh, it's an internal problem. Uh, met with Mike Ruper about, uh, rope communications with the water plant. Uh, we discussed that during the project. And we had a water main breakup on nine partners that was repaired.
Where on nine partners was this?
Uh, just below John Wicker's house.
Okay.
Around one, number one sixty four, thirty across.
More towards forty four than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sewer side, um, replaced the hydraulic hose on the tractor. And wanna know what you guys wanna do with the old camera trailer. Right now it's pretty much, I wouldn't say stripped out, but we took most of the stuff out of it.
I'll do what that is first.
Well, we used to camera the sewer lines. We said camera, uh, cameras inoperable and not replaceable by the company that we purchased it from.
Yeah.
And went out, this is going back to last year. And went out, got prices on getting a whole new system, which is gonna put us over sixty grand a week. And then now we go and have someone come in and do it.
Yeah.
I think it's more efficient.
Can we sell it?
That's why I wanted to know what you wanted to do with it. The trailer's just been sitting there for well over a year.
Is it worth anything?
I think grass. What's that?
I'm not familiar with what it looks like. Is it worth anything? Can we sell it?
Yeah, it's only ten years old. Looks just like it has the village emblem on it. Uh, I don't know if they could be using it around here, but.
It's a box trailer?
Yep. It's got electric in it.
It does?
Yep.
Hmm.
Just gotta hook up a generator. And we had all all rigged up for the camera stuff. Uh, still got a desk in it. We gotta pull that out, but, um, and the old reel for the camera, which is no use to us anymore.
You wanna take a look at it with Ethan?
Yeah, I'll take a look unless he can use it.
No, but you guys think?
If they, yeah, if someone can use it.
The village of.
You know.
At some point holding on to it.
Otherwise. Yeah, I mean, A, it's gonna be in the way when we go do the upgrade, so we'll have to move it then. But, um, if it can't be used, then, you know, I don't see why I don't put up for auction, like we've done several other things, right?
Yeah.
Get something for it.
Absolutely. Okay.
So.
Make sure the flag on that, Scott?
Yeah.
Take a look someday.
Yeah. Uh, I'm just sitting there.
Um, just on sewer while we're here and while Josh is here too. So maybe one of your first legal projects way back in the two thousand twelve was an IMA with the town and the county regarding the county office building's use of the sewer line. Recall this?
It's going way back, yeah.
You're you wrote it. You you're you were the, uh, you were the lawyer on it. It's the infirmary for the infirmary, yeah. So.
Jeez.
With our.
Been a while, huh?
With our current, um, uh, Speedy's permit and our work with our consult and our work with our engineers, uh, and the DEC, um, they are wondering, they're requiring us to have an IMA with all town users, not just the county. Now, what's the number? Sixty something?
Yeah, I'm pretty happy with it, but, um, that sounds about right.
Let's call it sixty.
In in that ballpark, yeah.
Mostly residences, but also Cardinal Hayes.
Cardinal Hayes, Donovan.
Yeah.
Dyson Foundation, the Buscarage, just to name it through that art.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I don't know, you've been worth the first step. Do you guys think that?
Just thinking off the top of my head, we come up with, I don't see why there would be very much unique between each IMA uh, your municipal agreement for each user. Probably come up with a form and you've got the list and a cover letter and this is required, contact me if you have questions.
For the parcel owner? Every, so one for every single parcel, basically?
Yeah, yeah. But it's it's.
And the town has to be a party too, I think.
It's more ministerial than anything.
According to this DEC.
It sounded.
And I was, I'll I'll send you some.
It sounded to me from the email that we needed an agreement with the town.
Right, that's how I kind of write it too. Now, I don't even know how the town's departed to this, other than those people living in the town. I'll send you the, so you have more color. Um, I'll send you some of the emails, but, um.
So how are they being billed?
Just like everybody else.
With a beer.
Just trying to figure out why the town, we'll we'll find out.
Yeah.
Town doesn't play any any role but the the collection of bees, right?
There's no special district. I mean, sometimes you have a, you'll have a special district. Like, so if it's outside of the village or the town, might as well have a special district for that separate municipality or if it's a, you know, say apartment complex or, you know, sometimes you have that, but you don't have a special district here yet, one.
I'll send you some materials.
Okay.
Give us your thoughts.
Sure.
What's an IMA?
The inter-municipal agreement.
Okay.
So like we have one with Millerton and Rhinebeck for, uh, Justin, the code enforcement officer's assistant on Friday. So he works for two different municipalities.
Uh-huh.
Um, and he works for us as well technically, and we have an agreement with those two towns.
Okay.
Sometimes they call it a shared services agreement. It's just when the municipalities are sharing something. It's like Justin.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Everybody's paying their share.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, yeah.
Okay.
So if you have.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you. Um, before we go on to anything new, I just wanna make a special, um, birthday announcement to my son, John. I missed it last week because I was sick, but John, happy sixth birthday. I love you, buddy.
Happy birthday, John.
Yeah, there we go.
Get everybody involved.
Two thirty.
Um, Julia, you had a shade tree commission meeting. Please, please enlighten us.
Yes, we had my first shade tree committee meeting here about two weeks ago. Um, we are working on Arbor Day, which is, um, the last Friday in April. It's gonna be behind Elm Drive. I've met with Dennis, Dennis Jendron about a tree. We're gonna do another elm, but a different kind of elm than was, uh, planted last year. Um, we looked at a place for that tree behind the Elm Drive School. And then I think where there are, if you're looking at the back of the school, there are the, um, swings. And then there's sort of this area that's just grass. And it seemed like kind of an obvious place to put a tree because it would create shade for the swings. It would create, you know, it it would be a good place for a tree to grow. Um, so Dennis is is ready to go with that. I do need to get ahold of, um, Ms. McConnell, I think is her name, at the school and let her know, sort of touch base with her and let her know that we're go for Arbor Day festivities on, uh, that April, that Friday, April, whatever, ten o'clock. And I can, I'll let you guys know as well. Um, also, as and we're meeting again tomorrow to go over bylaws. We're gonna formalize our, um, the taking down of trees protocols, right? So that, and also trying to figure out like what trees were responsible for and what trees were not responsible for. Again, is it twenty five, that twenty five feet versus six feet thing? Um, so we're gonna, yeah, we'll be going over that. Um.
Just on that, I thought we had already changed that.
Yeah. That's what we wanted to, again, I I'm just trying to figure out what that is, right? If it is changed and we know what it is, then it'll be there in the bylaws. I I just, yeah, I mean, it may.
Mike should have that. I mean, I I recall us.
Wasn't it twenty five feet off the something?
It was.
Now it's six feet off the curb, right, from the edge of the road, I believe?
Right.
Right, but so that, right, so that, but therein is the is the question. So which is it? Is it now, it's now six feet off the curb?
The last. Six, six feet. It was only five feet and I think we moved it to six.
Okay.
Just in a little background there, and and Tim can shed some light if he wants to. Um, we were spending a lot of money every year taking down trees that were.
Yeah. Yeah. Somebody else's, yeah.
We felt like. We felt we're somebody else's responsibility.
Yeah.
Friday, yeah.
So we were, we tried to reduce that, that radius there to eliminate a lot of the cost.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, and I think we're, all we're trying to do is is dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that whatever.
Yeah, maybe you said qualified, I don't know.
Right, we, if that is in the bylaws, just again, what are our responsibilities? So that I understand and that we're all operating from the same sort of page playbook thing. Um, the other thing I did since I was meeting with Dennis is I had Dennis go take a look at the pump house. And he has already put together, uh, a proposal for, I I didn't look at it very carefully, but shrubs and so forth to go around.
To screen it.
To to screen that.
Generator.
Um, and I don't know what our next steps would be with that, but he was.
I did see your email.
I did too.
I'm gonna meet with someone on Friday to to plant the seeds, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, to see how that goes. So we'll, I'll have more information for the board after, after that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, if we can get some donation money for that. There.
Just a comment about the, uh, the change to the to Lina. It doesn't make much of a difference for main roads. But on the smaller roads we have, there's a couple in the village, it makes a big difference. And so six feet from the from the, uh, shoulder makes a lot more sense. And I'm pretty sure that the bylaws have been updated.
Okay.
And I think they're actually posted somewhere, aren't they?
It should be, they're on the website. I don't know if the updating ones are on the website.
Yeah, on the website, yeah.
Well, that's, so I found a copy in the binder that Mike gave me.
That's probably outdated.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, and then, so where are the updated ones? Are the updated ones the ones?
Check, let's check the website.
On the website, okay.
I think the board actually approved the change.
I believe we did.
So I think.
Yeah, I believe so. Okay, so I'm gonna be, um, we're meeting here tomorrow at four, so maybe I'll come a little bit early and we'll see if we can get a printed copy of those for.
Well, we'll hang out. Let's hang out for two, two minutes after the meeting.
And we'll see what's up next, okay?
Right there.
Um, yeah, I think that's, that's essentially what what we covered so far with the shade tree meeting.
Um, aquifers.
That's me. I made a copy for everyone, so if that one passed the camera. It's six pictures, pages long. I'm just gonna give you the bullet points.
Okay, perfect.
Um, basically this is for private residences. These are gonna be new residences because, um, this, uh, new laws that they have for the aquifer wetlands law, um, uh, started in October of twenty first of last year. So what it basically says is that they have the circumference around, say, a contaminant, like a gas station or, um, anyone that's holding tanks, you know, things like that. It's, uh, fifteen hundred feet. And then for the private residents, it will be another fifteen hundred feet. So if you put a circle there of fifteen hundred feet and then you have a person that wants to build a, you know, down the street or across the street from it, it has to be fifteen hundred feet away. However, sometimes the circles will, you know, interlock and there'll be a little overlap. So what they basically said was that you do, they do everything on a case by case basis. So if it's overlapping a little bit, it's not a hard no, you know? But, um, you need to start, uh, what you do is you call Duchess. Um, and and start, they they recommend that if if someone's gonna be doing this, get them involved in the very beginning of the process because you'll have a lot better chance of getting what you need and what you want from them. Um, and all, and so, you know, always start there first and say, hey, look, there's someone that wants to put a new residence here and it's so far from, you know, this thing. Contaminants don't include things like if we store fertilizer at the public works or something, or if we have salt. We don't have to worry about things like that. It's really just major contaminants, dry cleaners. You know, businesses that carry chemicals to do things, so gas stations, things like that. I don't know, it may not apply so much to us, but so they've increased that distances and it's increased contaminants. And basically what happens is it covers sixty percent of Duchess County. So it's kind of, but a lot of people were asking them questions and they were like, mm, I don't really know what I've been answered for that. So it's like, they're still in kind of the works of of getting it developed, so, you know, since.
Yeah, like there's some gray area.
Yeah, there's some gray areas. So if if you get them involved and you say, hey, look, this is what somebody wants to do, then I think they'll be, you know, very agreeable to it to to kind of help help you work along. But, um, so it's just for private residents, it's regulating drilling of public water supply. So basically, they wanna drill and they wanna get it from an aquifer or they wanna get it from a wetlands and they're drilling underground for their well. But, um, with that being said, But um with that being said. Hold on. Um so let's, um there's something else I was gonna say about it. Yeah. Oh, maps. Okay, so with maps, um they at the DEC don't update their wetlands and aquifer, you know, on maps. So I think it would be the responsibility of the owner to get, make sure they have an updated map or we have updated maps or something. Because if something has changed and wetlands has gotten closer to us and we, you know, or something.
Yeah.
We need to be privy to that so we know that it's not an old map we're looking at and basing our our decisions on that. So that's just to protect, to cover us for that. Um but there are, it's a case by case basis, there's there's waiver process forms to fill out. I mean, and they're all accessible on the website and contacting them. And uh if you wanna read more about it, you can go to the website or and just these six pages really lays it out pretty good.
Okay.
This is pretty updated, thank you.
Yeah, in terms of maps.
That's a good, for maps, these things are.
Okay.
Our our.
Okay. So that's like the most important thing to cover, you know, to cover us, you know, make sure, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the audience on aquifers? In the coming months, we didn't get a chance to to really do it last year in conjunction with the uh the zoning change. Um but I've, I think I mentioned it before, I've uh, you know, I've been in discussions with um our our building inspector. Um and Ian a little bit as well, a couple of months back about uh changing some of our setbacks. Uh and building requirements around uh bodies of water and aquifers.
Yeah.
Just like somewhat related to this, basically, like.
It's super important, yeah, especially if someone has, where they buried something and there's something sitting there for years.
Yeah.
You know, we need to make sure that we get that stuff out if it's anywhere near our, you know, water source, our public water source.
Definitely. So in the, so there'll be more to come on that from me in the in the next couple of months. Um but Shannon, thank you, this is great.
Okay, great, welcome.
Um ch- ch- any comments from the public? Tim.
We skipped Sarah's voting treasure report.
I was gonna say.
Ooh.
Yeah, wow.
Right over that.
Be most important.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
Bad job, I think.
Thank you, former mayor.
So surprising to what I was thinking.
Okay, so for building for February, we issued one certificate of use, three certificate of compliances, four municipal searches. And Justin has been doing a really good job at contacting people to start doing the fire inspections for the uh businesses, so he has two under his belt, so we collected thirteen hundred dollars in fees. Um planning zoning is pretty quiet, I haven't seen anything and I don't think I saw anything for a March meeting either, so maybe uh next month, we'll see.
And we also, he also um submitted the annual report.
Yes.
I believe as well.
Yes, uh Ken and Justin submitted it and I believe it was approved, but they'll quote me on that one.
And then just one other follow up on on those guys. Um what will be with Scott too as needed is uh the grease.
Okay.
The grease traps in some of these commercial establishments and the restaurants. We do have some stuff in our code um about how to approach grease. This is another thing the EPA has been asking us about, how we deal with grease. Um it says we do have Justin once, once a week, in addition to fire inspections, um as soon as we formulate a plan, let's say there's there's probably ten restaurants in the village. He can very easily inspect the grease traps once a year.
For some of these places, so we're.
Reducing the extent um the grease to the extent we can go down to the sewer plant and that's the operation.
Not to add to his duties, but maybe we should deal with sump pumps at the same time. Personally, that's a bigger issue than grease.
I know.
I know the EPA is not on, is on the grease, but I mean, he if, I'm not saying that.
No, I know.
But if he's in the building and he sees something.
Yeah.
We should make note of it and then pers- you know, proceed to deal with it.
Yeah. I would think it's, I mean, maybe I could be wrong, like do you think the commercial establishments on the on the business vendors?
I would say it's residential, but I can think of one off the top of my head that I'm pretty sure has a sump pump.
Hmm, okay.
This is going into the public sewer.
Correct.
Hmm. And this is obviously a problem for years. I don't think we've figured out a way to go after anybody that's doing it.
No warnings or no order remedy?
What I've noticed, it's in the village code, but you know.
Uh so it's a violation and uh if that doesn't work, you can ultimately take them to court for enforcement.
I mean, cause the the biggest thing is finding out where they are, you know, without going inside. I I've seen it doing videos of the sewer man, you can tell when you sit there for five minutes and it just keeps running. I mean, it's not, it's not a sink drain, you know.
But we can't just knock on people's doors and inspect their basements, obviously, unless.
Right, but if there's a reason.
Right, no, for sure.
That's why I read up, you know, yeah.
For fire inspection.
If if he's doing a an inspection for any anywhere and he happens upon it, sees it.
Yeah, it's like, we're there doing it already.
I mean, I I've seen it, you know, when I've been in a basement, so.
Ken, is uh, can you run them into catch basins or not?
That I don't know.
Is that in the code?
But but see, there's the the other issue with with your sump pumps, right? Okay, so you've got it going into sewer, then you tell somebody you gotta get rid of it, then where do they put it?
Put it in the catch, right?
In the catch basin.
Right.
Then it's not, it's bypassing your sewer plant.
And this is, again, we've been discussing this for decades.
Yeah, but I just don't know if that's uh in the code or not.
I mean. So and and it's just, it's always going around and around and around and you can never do anything about it, but with the EPA being honest about it, everything helps. It's just something that.
Maybe they have a solution.
They don't.
Yeah.
They obviously.
There's options.
They don't have a solution.
So if you do an inspection and find that they're in violation, and you said that you give them a notice, are you then allowed to go back and knock on the door at a random time and re-inspect?
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, to get it.
Why does that have to proceed to them, we should?
Right, because that that's a good point. Because up until now, we've done absolutely nothing, right?
Right.
And if we know, even if we know of stuff, I mean, I can think of one off the top of my head, but alright, so there's no notice, nobody outside maybe me mentioning it to the person, or I had no legal enforcement, so. But if the village sends a letter and we, and then we follow that procedure, then you have enforcement.
Then you have recourse.
Yeah. The only, the only other issue is now, what do you do when it's in the town? Because the one I'm thinking about is in the town.
Hmm. Yeah.
What what recourse would, how how would, I mean, it's the village sewer system, but it's the town of Washington.
And you're saying the argument is they're on village water.
In sewer.
In sewer.
Now there, maybe come back to our IMA.
I was thinking.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And and just for the benefit of the new trustees, this is I and I.
Correct.
It is a big, big problem, all this extra flow going into the sewer plant that.
Has to be treated.
That has to be treated. Um and that sometimes it exceeds the flows that we're, you know, that are limited on. So this is a big, big problem. It's been going on for years and we haven't figured out a solution.
And what's the law, the law is you have to properly dispose of your grease, used grease.
Grease field.
So this is sump pump.
Something, grease sump pump, there are two separation issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
A lot of water.
They're both, they're both in the village code.
Okay.
Sump pumps is uh water that's collecting in somebody's basement and they pump it out, you know.
Oh, I see, okay, great.
They have a basement, whole basement, even crawl space.
And they're just constantly pumping water.
Right, so the water is going into the system.
As water's coming in the basement, this will relieve the basement.
A lot of shale around here, a lot, a lot of water.
Oh, okay.
Old stone foundations.
And old stone foundations of people's basements, a lot of them are wet, so they have to get rid of the water. But they can't just put it into our sewer system, not allowed by the code now.
Right, but it's been on, it goes back to the seventies when the the code, it was in the code then.
The code, yeah.
So we just reworded it, but when we when we updated the code, but it was there in the seventies in the original sewer.
What are you doing?
Well, the fire inspections and, you know, some grease inspections, I mean, that's a good start, you know.
Right. Yeah, starting some.
And we could see what he does in Rhinebeck and.
Took some voice though, yeah.
Yeah.
Already has a process.
What what about smoke testing? You gonna highlight this problem?
Uh sump pumps, more than likely not, because the way that the smoke works, so it goes into your sewer. And if if your sump pump's attached to it, you got, if the pump goes in and then you got a pit with water, if the smoke will hit that water, it won't come out.
It won't come out, okay.
Uh different than, again, most places have traps, right, sewer traps, I mean, that's prevents it from going into the house.
Yeah, okay.
So now, if a sump, sump was dry, then yes.
Yeah, if it was a muddy.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, but typically, if you got a sump pump and you got a pit, there's gonna be water sitting in there.
Yeah.
Uh so.
But you only don't win this dry anyway, right, the smoke test.
Right, but you you know, most sump pumps or sump pits will have, even if it's, even if there's not water coming in, there's gonna be water in.
Smoke is in the. Is it, okay.
Coming through the water, yeah, typically.
Uh is there any other ways we can, we can approach it, like inspections, like are we allowed to do inspections for all that?
That's what we're talking, I think.
Yeah.
Like just doing.
After something lighter, I think we talk.
Building inspections.
Um I mean, we've, you know, at least a couple of years ago, we were talking about like when someone sells a house, when they do an inspection, documented then, but the result. You know, but again, it's all gotta be documented and there's gotta be some kind of teeth to it, you know.
Writing them a letter and then never back, because they could just throw it in the garbage.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, there's.
If you don't follow up on it, it doesn't do us any good, right?
Justin wants help with the process, maybe I could talk to him and.
Okay.
We could work together on that.
Okay.
And you know, there's a number of opportunities to observe these things.
Yeah.
Short of knocking on someone's door and saying, I'm here to look in your basement, you can't do that.
No, you can't.
But but there are other opportunities to 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 observe, definitely.
That's it. I mean, if, I guess the other question would be like, so if we, me, you know, I was not an employee of the village or in someone's home for whatever reason, water meter issue, to check, test the water, whatever. You know, if we see it, you know, where where do we go, you know, who's going to be able to report it to us and.
Let's take this offline and not discuss anymore in public, um but I think these are all great ideas. And um maybe let's, let's all, you know, chat about this soon, because the sooner we deal with this, the better. Okay. Thank you. Um thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Um any other, uh.
Twenty one minutes.
Wow.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, break downs.
I'll be really, really quick, I promise.
Treasure report.
Okay, um biggest notable, we did get the fire contract, um obviously, this was February. And um if you see in your class, I made wherever it is. Made the transfer for the fire truck.
Half of, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, for the reserve. Um and then, let's see, so that was part of that. Um we got the approval from New York State for the local law that we just, we just passed. Um I will be getting letters back from banks. I submitted a solicitation letter for the hundred thousand dollar bond, so I should get that back for the next budget meeting. Um I did bank recs with Karen and um it's budget, budget, budget.
Can we transfer the seventy five?
Yep. It's in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Treasure a link.
No problem. Put them here.
We have things from board members, anything else?
I got a call from a member of the business community. Um they would like to, the, is it Business Association?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe.
Yeah, they um they have questions about, um I guess somebody's heard about the the veterans banners. And they would, they are interested in in participating in a the conversation about those going forward.
Okay.
I encourage them to come to the meeting tonight, I, but, um anyway, I did, I did get a call and pass it on.
Early stages, so not.
Oh, right.
Not much to report really, right, quite, you know, quite yet, but um either pass the information along or just will, once we know more.
Communicate with the public, yeah, no, that's, I think that's all, they're, they're just asking to be a part of the process.
Have we heard anything?
Have we heard anything on the brackets or from Ethan or like?
We didn't anything, I haven't even gotten there. I know that, I know Gary at the town has made an announcement at the town board meeting. They're gonna do some outreach on their end to um budget kind of took over the last couple of total level months, so.
Yeah.
We will revisit.
Revisit shortly.
Um anybody else, board, board members?
Uh do you wanna wait and talk at a later time about the hazard mitigation plan, like getting that?
Um.
No, I mean, just getting.
Um I talked to Dom about it briefly. I just mentioned it to him.
Okay.
Um I mentioned it to Ethan as well, we talked about it, um cause I know that they were looking for multiple people to get involved. So um I don't know if there's anything else.
No, I was just.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay. I guess we'll s- we'll reach, we'll respond to them maybe and then we'll see what they say.
Okay.
Who else?
With um the weather getting nicer, people will be driving faster, already driving faster. I've had a couple, a couple residents in Village, um Maple Avenue, everyone going home around, you know, end of day work. Going very fast with some people walking their dogs. And it's residents, which is, you know, on Maple Avenue. Also, um I walk every morning to work, so when I'm walking, uh it's mostly uh contractors, builders, they're gonna start doing their route where they go from forty four and make their shortcut, you know, down the road past the bookstore. And they're pretty fast coming in, it's not twenty five, that's for sure.
Well, let's uh, we will, we will tell chief and um this is a discussion that happens every year.
Yeah, it, but it's a reality, like they're a bunch of birds and they're all their own. They still kept going fast and it was like, it was like, you know, the Birds movie, Hitchcock movie, it was bad, it was pretty bad.
Chief, we were just discussing um with the weather getting warmer, um people tending to drive faster. So let's just have um your team, you know, keep an eye out on.
It's mostly the Stanford Road entrance coming into town, past the post office, that's the road. They're fast and then, and and who knew, but Maple Avenue for some reason at the end, at the end of the workday.
Well, and nine partners is, they keep just buzz by there very quickly.
And when we changed the uh, when we changed the the speed limit, I had people on mine, partners complaining to me that it was too slow.
Sort of.
So um I know Chief and his team will monitor this closely.
We'll, we'll do traffic studies and we'll, we'll start with those locations. And then uh if, if somebody, if a resident has a complaint about speeding, the best thing for them to do is contact them.
I told them to do that, I did, I told them.
Because, be, yeah, because then we can create a complaint on it. And then, once we get the traffic study back, I'll be with them personally, over it, show them what what our findings are and what our results will be, so.
Okay.
You know, a lot of these cases, and I, and I'm not trying to diminish anybody's concerns, in in some of these cases, it's an appearance of speed.
Yeah.
So the report will feather that out and then we can go over the report with them and show them whether, yes, it is correct
Oh, right, okay.
and we intend to do enforcement to deal with it, or it's an appearance of speed and we'll monitor it.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
You saw the sign?
We have it, it's, it's being charged now and prepared to uh be sold on one of these locations.
Great. Chief.
Sure.
Uh with spring being here, the tennis courts are now open for uh the public's playing pleasure. Um anything else? I'll make a motion to cool, uh to go into executive session, do I have a second? All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, guys.